That area, the State Street and the neighborhood around there. And then we have a staff review confirming that things such as setbacks, side yards, lot coverage, height, all meet bulk controls. They intend at the parking lot that they will be building on the east-west side of Graham Drive, they will be deed restricting the required spaces to meet their parking requirements for their office building. They are on the agenda for the Shade Tree Commission tomorrow evening. They have 16 trees are required. The current site plan has three, looked like a...
Thirteen.
Has 13, excuse me. So they may need to work out something with the Shade Tree Commission in order to either fit those three on there based upon the Shade Tree Commission's recommendation, or to work with the Shade Tree Commission's tree banking program for those three trees. And as far as the Public Works, the Public Works Director just is requesting additional detail relating to the storm drainage, the water and the sanitary, basically about the connections and a requirement for a manhole. That is information that Mr. Stone said could be provided after the planning commission to him and would be reviewed and confirmed prior to construction commencing. As it relates to police and fire, neither the police chief nor the fire chief had any issues. And as a staff, our recommendation after discussion would be to recommend the planning commission approve the project with the conditions that the Shade Tree Commission approve, review and approve a landscaping plan, and that RVC provide the details on the utilities, and those details be reviewed and accepted by our Division of Public Works.
Mr. Mayor?
Couple questions. I know John Code mentions need to show location of trash and dumpster area. The other question, since you didn't mention floodplain, I assume it's outside the floodplain 100 year and 500 year.
Correct.
Yes, it was.
And I just guess I needed to know, if you can tell me, maybe you can't, what the current dumpster situation is, if it's in the parking lot where the building's being built, and we need to relocate it and show where that's going to be.
So sitting here for Mr. Valantour.
And it may be...
But surely we'll comply with any...
Yeah, and it may be a simple, they're using camps. I just don't know. Then they just need to let me know which way they're going to go, within, we can go from there.
Mr. Mayor? I noticed it also appears that you're actually moving the entrance over to the south with this new addition. If I'm reading the schematic correctly, the main entrance will now be on the parking lot. I also noticed that's a fairly new parking lot, so you're going to tear up, I guess. Is that what I'm looking at? You're shaking your head.
Yeah. I think the, I believe the current, the current building, I think, was opened in 2007, I believe, according to the county auditor, so.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Valantour, keep your ear for this.
Yeah, well, this is, you know, I mean, I don't know. It's the first time we've seen it, so we could have it as a preliminary approve or preliminary view, and at the next meeting, go for a final review with the staff recommendations. We could still do a staff recommendation with, you know, we've suggested having the conditions of the Shade Tree Commission and the details provided for storm drainage. We could add to that a condition for...
Trash.
Trash and some of the other follow-through, you know, provide, I guess, providing an updated site plan that showed trash. The only, and then if there's any conditions that the commission had outside of the staff recommendation as well.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Are we approving then this addition for 11 Graham, and at the same time approving the parking across the street at 10? But at this time, the future apartment housing is not included in this request?
Correct.
Does, with the apartment housing, I guess, would that be treated as a separate, that's a separate lot, or is it on the same lot as the parking?
It's going to be treated as, what will happen when they do develop this over here is the parking lot will technically go with this. That's why they need to deed restrict, and they will be short parking spaces from what their preliminary plan is for over here. So it's a whole nother, whole nother ballgame there as to what they need to do.
So will this parking that they're putting in then service and be adequate for their proposed housing? I mean, I feel like we're getting this in two pieces now.
It is in two pieces.
It would not?
It will, it is not currently...
So there would be additional parking requirements?
Yes, that a variance will be required for that. Yep.
My understanding is that whatever else happens on that portion to the west of Graham Drive is in the future, it is not a proposed housing project at this point. It is just a future development at this point. And I don't think there's necessarily any commitment by the owner that, yes, we're going to build apartments, or no, we're not, we're going to add more office space up, you know, so...
Treat those things as PUD.
I don't think we're seeking to comply with any requirements for the future use there at this point, because we don't know what that is.
Go ahead. I guess the concern is, again, to deed restrict parking, a parking lot that doesn't exist yet.
Well, the parking lot will be built now.
It will be built.
On the street, and it will be deed restricted to this parcel, yes.
Well, how much of the parking lot?
They need, if I remember right, we got five.
Written down.
They need 13 total.
They're eliminating five spaces. I went out and counted.
Okay.
Where the addition is.
Eight of the spots out of the 12 on the west side will have to be deeded to the Integrated Services Building.
Those are the 12?
They will have four extra spots that they can do it one of two ways. They can deed the whole parking lot to them, and then these guys, if and when it's built, can deed back to this, or whatever arrangement they make. Again, until we know exactly what that's going to entail, we don't know if the remaining four parking spaces are enough. But as it's being presented, they have the building with this parking lot showing sufficient parking as long as it is needed.
Go ahead.
But that's not all that's presented to us.
I know.
So I think that's part of the issue, is that we have this proposed housing, you know, the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, I'd even be more comfortable with the, that the parking be, you know, almost where the apartment housing, a parking be flipped on that parcel, where the apartment housing was closer to residential.
I think that was actually discussed at one time. At least I did, I asked Paul Logan a question.
Unfortunately, Mr. Gillespie from Integrated Services isn't here right now, but when John and I met with him, we asked about that, and he said that that was specifically, the parking was moved to the northern edge as a buffer between a potential future residential with the neighbor next door as a screening.
Yeah, it's a strange screen. I think housing would be a better screen.
I guess I'd go back to saying what the city code would say.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty subjective.
Well, I think that's true. I think I'm being a little subjective, but I would, I'm surprised at Andy to bring that up, just the fact that having these two, you know, usually you don't want those access points, you know, so close together like that unless they're directly apart. You know, you want some distance between two parking lots on opposite sides.
And there's an existing curb cut at the southern end of this property.
You're talking about the one across the street?
Yes, on 10. That would run along here.
Question. Okay. Well, okay, I guess the concern now, we're trying to look at two different construction things here, but the fact is that if we accept this, and that means that we only have four spaces left for the possible future apartment complex, we're fundamentally down to requiring a variance to develop that apartment or house. Even one house would take, one single-family house would be three places?
Well, possibly a variance. There's options that they wouldn't have to put under, you know, first floor, because it is a B3, so they're required to put residential on the second floor and above. So they may have to put the parking underneath the building with the garage, and therefore they would meet the parking requirements. It depends whatever design they come back with on this building, which we don't know right now.
Well, that's the other thing. I mean, right now, would you guess that the dash outline for the future housing is just the sort of most, biggest footprint it could receive by code, or is that, I mean...
I think it's wrong for you to even think about that. I think this is, that's entirely supposition. The last information I had, which was yesterday, was that there was not a commitment to residential or just that they would like to consider in the future that that portion of the site might be developed. So to suppose it's, you know, that they're going to need four spaces or 10 spaces, or, I mean, it seems like if they go ahead and build whatever they're going to build on here that requires variances, they will be required to get variances, if, you know, if not, they won't. But right now, I can't, I don't have any information, and therefore, I don't think you have information, is to really move, will be on there. And that really does represent, we're not asking you to approve that footprint, to approve the setbacks, I mean, that's just a dotted line on my plan. It says future development, so...
It's actually, it's very clear. It says future for apartment housing with a numerical on our plans, and perhaps what we need is to clean this plan up.
Yeah.
If it is indeed just for the addition and the required parking.
Well, I mean, obviously, there's not enough information.
From a planning standpoint, wouldn't the planning commission prefer more detail than less?
Well, that's true.
Well, I think that's, the problem we're running into is the more detail, we do prefer, but we're realizing that if an apartment is put in that footprint with that, the parking as it is, we see that it's not going to be able to work without some variances. And so then, we'd have to see how interested the representative of the owner or the owner would be in, you know, getting an approval of variance.
I think we're talking about two different projects.
Yeah.
And we're, you're trying to combine two into one.
Well, the deed...
They're asking for, they're asking for an approval for an addition of 1,100 square feet with deed restricted parking across the street, period.
But again, you presented us a plan, not usual. The site plan that we're all looking at has, you know, so...
Well, it included for the parking requirements, but the fact is, you have that outline saying of future apartments. And to tell you the truth, I know I talked to Kevin Gillespie about a year and a half ago, and really, the conversation was the expansion of his actual integrated services, but the possibility of putting in an apartment complex. So this, to me, was the first conversation I had with these fellows was a year and a half ago, maybe, or so, and we were talking about 10 Graham and not 11 Graham. So the expansion is, you know, to my mind, is chronologically a reversal, but again, if they need to go on this side. The only, again, it comes down to, are we funneling towards a variance on 10 Graham because of this? And that depends on what they plan to do there. Realize they could come back and say, we want apartments here, and we could say, no, you already committed your parking, and it's gone. You've soured that, you know, field. I hate to think that. You know, the next thing to do is say, this is a PUD that straddles Graham, which is a whole nother, well, lax. And I don't, you know, I don't know, you know, from my point of view, this looks, as a standalone, looks good. Really, what we're worried about is the apartments, that little outline on the bottom here.
Yeah, I mean, I think our concern is definitely the future planning of the spot. I mean, I feel more comfortable with the parking lot being directly across from the other parking, so that they do appear like they're integrated, but I think...
Right, well, I'm pretty upset that, you know, I can see why John comes in here and gets upset, because, you know, usually I don't, but this is all supposition. This is, you know, it's really clear, and, you know, Paul has made it really clear what we're asking for, and for you to try to redesign things for us, I think, is entirely wrong. Your notion about what makes a better buffer or not, I don't know that I accept your authority in that area. So I think this is what is presented, and I think you have to react to this. And, you know, I think it's pretty clear. I think the recommendations of the staff are pretty clear, and I don't see, I mean, if somebody was going to come back later and put a, you know, a meatpacking plant or something there, or do who knows what, they're going to have to come to the code office and get, you know, get authority to do that. And if it's an apartment building and there's not enough parking, then they won't be able to build it without some kind of variance, which I imagine you'd be reluctant to give them. You know, but as you pointed out, there's many possible solutions. If, in fact, even they did develop that, they could acquire additional property, you know, abutting property, there's a lot that they could do. You know, I'm not that familiar with their, with what they do, but it seems like they have made an enormous improvement to a piece of property in the city already. You know, I've walked through the facility. I think they're doing a needed job to help people, and this will enable them to further service, you know, a population that we need to service. And I'm not sure what this, you know, I think we should just, I don't care if you want to, you can make a big X through the apartment building, I'll initial it, you know, if that's all this takes, but...
Well, you know, I do apologize for asking questions that you weren't responsible for the design of this, and I understand that. That's why I prefaced my comments with that, you know, I feel they may be kind of subjective about this, but the thing is, you've got to remember, we don't see this, we don't make staff recommendations. This is sort of our opportunity to make some comments, and I, I mean, I would pretty much sense that the direction is that this is going to receive its approval. So with that, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, you had a comment?
Me?
Yeah.
Well, you know, again, you look at the, if we start talking about the apartment complex, again, this is a B3, so you couldn't have residential on the bottom anyway. So at that point, you know, we could see the same type of model we saw with the first Title 41, where apartment, parking is below, which is satisfying. So it is speculation on our part to get involved in that.
Right, I believe so.
You know, and, you know, again, it's, we're concentrating on the other side of the street, really, but, you know, I look at the, I went out there, I've looked, I don't see this as really being detrimental, and I think most of the parts of Title 41 have been covered. But again, I'm just one member, and I know, I know from my point of view, we need to ask these questions just to know, just because it is, you know, my criticism of the planning commission in the past, it's been just a plating agency, and therefore, this is a plat, but this development across the street, which is brought up because of deed restrictions of parking, is in our purview at that point, saying, okay, the future use of that, a parking lot, and where the parking lot will be. I mean, if we're looking at that whole lot and not the apartment, why isn't it close to East State Street? Why would it be closer to whatever the next house is? I guess it must be 12 Graham or something. You know, I mean, that's, then, now we're into the placement of the parking lot, which is in our purview somewhere. I mean, if you're going to say you have the whole lot, and you're deed restricting it, and we want a buffer between zones, R2 and B3, it becomes, it becomes a topic. Neither here nor there. You know, again, I think, I don't think we're going to disapprove it. I don't think I have a problem with this. I look at the construction, I look at the site, it's appropriate from my point of view. But we want to flesh it out, the questions. And again, you're, you know, how much homework have you had a chance to do on this? You said yesterday you talked to Mr. Valantour?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I mean, it's a lot, not a lot of prep time, I understand, to quiz you on this stuff.
Any other comments from the commission?
I share Nicholas's view as far as, I'm not crazy about where the parking lot is, you know, is going to abut someone's residence. I don't know what that does to their property value, but that's neither here nor there on it. But, you know, I don't see anything. My, my initial concern coming in was the buffer to the west side, you know, how that was going to affect residences that were over on that side. But I see that, you know, they have the trees over on there, so, you know, I think the parking lot was my, my biggest reservation on that, and just again, with the integration, you know, I think it would have been better to have the parking lot across from the other parking lot, but, you know, if it does fit into, you know, what we're going to approve.
There's no further discussion, I'd like to place a motion.
Is there any discussion?
I have one other question. The Public Works, are those a lot of questions to be resolved before, you know, really we approve this? I mean, are there issues in the Public Works itself?
I didn't see any that were sort of a showstopper. I mean, it's really sort of detailing, and a lot of times, the engineer, architect, or owner doesn't want to finance all the drawings until knowing that it's going to be approved by the commission, so none of them seemed sort of outside that in one.
RJ, to answer your question, just because they get approval here, they would still have to come back in to get a zoning permit after this, and at that time, Andy and I do have project meeting to make sure these issues are all dealt with.
Okay, thanks.
This is pretty much a developed area, so most of the infrastructure's already in place.
Just providing the detail.
Continue, so again, I put forward a motion to approve this development of Integrated Service System on 11 Graham Avenue, or to approve the site of Title 41 site plan review.
That's your motion?
That is my motion with the conditions of the findings that the Shade Tree Commission, that there is resolution to the number of trees, as well as continue work on the, with Andy Stone, zoning.
I'll second that.
And the dumpster.
Oh, I apologize. Another, third condition on the dumpsters area.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. Thank you. All right, we have two cases on the agenda today. Second one is number 10-04. It is cur distributing is the operations. It's 771 West Union Street. It is also a Title 41 site plan review. If there's anyone in attendance that is going to speak on behalf of either the owner or the owner himself, please either sit at the table here or take the podium. Is there a staff review on this one?
None away.
Thank you.
He's been a busy guy.
All right.
With trees, I think, we updated it. One with the trees, are they updated?
My first question is whether or not the name remains the same.
It's not going to be registered?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
That's a corporate name, is AFP Distributors, DBA Southeast Beverage Company.
Southeast Beverage. Okay, Mr. Luck, do you like on the last review we just had, would you get a chance, if you could lead us through a summary of the staff recommendations?
Okay, well, first of all, AFP Warehouse Holdings, they've applied for a use permit, I guess, DBA doing business at Southeast, Southeast Beverage? Is that right?
Yes.
They've required, or applied for a use permit to build an addition to what is commonly known as the Cur Distributing Warehouse, 803 West State, State Route 56. So where...
Union.
You said State.
I said State Route.
Oh, I'm sorry.
State Route 56, Union, West Union.
Cur Distributing is a warehouse distributor for beer and non-alcoholic beverages. Access to the site is achieved from Kenny Road. That is a industrial subdivision that was platted several, probably about two decades ago, off of State Route 56. The zoning for this site is M, which is industrial, it is a warehousing project. The estimated cost is $400,000. This is a proposed addition of 12,000 square feet on a lot that is about four and a half acres or four and a quarter acres. The east side of the lot is, the surrounding land uses, there is an R1 zone with a large lot residential on the east. Those lots have frontage on Elliottville Road. It is B3 to the north, across State Route 56, and within, it is an M zone within there. The comprehensive plan recommends, or comments that the Kenny Road industrial area, it is nearly built out, but does have room for a few more buildings. This is a good spot for this type of development because of the city's potential for tax revenues from, from income tax, and it comments specifically that cur distributing TS Tech and UPS are primary occupants as is. From a staff review, code director John Paskey reviewed for any code issues, zoning is acceptable. The site plan meets bulk controls for parking, setbacks, lot coverage and use. This is on the Shade Tree's agenda for tomorrow evening. There are approximately 100 trees needed. As you can see, the site, there is an attempt to provide the trees. A lot of those trees on the east side are not on the property line, so those likely would not be included in the Shade Tree approval tomorrow evening, but they will be meeting with the Shade Tree Commission to figure out how to provide the trees either onsite or through a tree banking system. We also have the existing sign for where the distributorship is in the city's right-of-way. Because there's a transfer of ownership, the property owner will need to get a new revocable license. The Public Works did not have any concerns relating to storm drainage, water, sanitary, et cetera, and the police and fire chiefs both had no issues relating to this development. And from a staff standpoint, our recommendation is to approve the site plan with stipulations for satisfactory review and approval from the Shade Tree Commission, and that the revocable license from the city's right-of-way must be granted by city council within 90 days before the sign should be removed.
Do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Couple things. The revocable license is probably going to be tight to do it in 90 days, and I mention that because city council usually takes off for August.
Right, they've got the application for it, and I told them to get it in, because they're changing the signage, obviously, and so what we do there, there was never a revocable license issued before, because this was built prior to them being issued. But now, since we have a change of ownership, they're going to be required to obtain one.
So...
That was my recommendation, not assuming, not, or not considering August would not be in session for council, so in 120 days, if the planning commission thinks that's better, shit would be sufficient.
There's no coordinates for the duration they have, or that?
Probably don't believe so.
I mean, there's no standard duration. I mean, the 90 days is just...
For revocable use of license, he's asking to actually require somebody to take it down, or get a license.
Yeah. I guess once ownership is changed, is there, is the 90 just arbitrary? I mean, I'm not trying to...
Had there been one, they would have been required to issue or apply for it anyways, because it is required on transfer of ownership. But since there was never one issued on this one, and the sign's been there for 30 years, I told them to get the paperwork in, and we'll run it through its due course and make sure it's put down the way it's supposed to have been to begin with.
Okay, other questions? So that applies that whole wedge there, that little triangular section on 56 is actually city right-of-way. The other thing, if I look at the left-hand job description here, it says there's an area A, addition A and B, one being 6,000 square feet, the other one being 12,000 square feet. I'm assuming we're talking about addition B, but I'm not sure what addition A is, since I don't see it on the schematic.
They forgot to take that off the nomenclature when they changed the drawings.
There is no A.
The 6,000 is gone.
Okay, just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, we thought that this morning as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's just one addition of the 12,000 square feet.
Okay, I was just wondering about that. So it's really, it's a subset of the 12,000.
Okay.
That's the questions I had, I was just confused with that when I looked at this last week.
I'm familiar with this site, and I did not have any issues with this development.
Nor I.
So the addition, essentially, if I read it correctly, is to the south, and it's going to be facing TS Tech.
That's correct.
It's basically warehousing, a full barn structure, or a warehouse. Okay.
It'll be a steel structure, pre-engineered building, Paul, yeah, Butler pre-engineered building. It's a real, it's a very high floor.
All right, I will finish.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, that would accept this Title 41, this plan. Again, conditional on the pre Shade Commission's review and approval of landscaping plans, and the sign being dealt with in terms of revocable license. It doesn't have to be within 90 days, but as soon as possible, considering council. You're making a face.
I said, right, they've already made, they've got the paperwork to do the applications.
Okay.
We'll get it in as soon as we can.
Second in motion?
I'll second. You did.
No, that's...
RJ seconded.
Are those in... Are those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Good. Do thank you for your time. Next item on the agenda is communications. We had tentatively planned to do, continue our strategic planning, but due to Harry's absence, and having two cases on the agenda for the day, we will be tabling any strategic planning discussion at this time. Is there any other communications?
The only thing I'd like to say is thanks, Paul, for putting all this together, all of your staff meeting reviews. I know it was a lot of work. Chasing everybody down.
I know. It's unfortunate, because we don't get to ask any code-related questions any longer. So, it's all provided for us. So it's a way you've made it even more difficult to be...
Trying to shift from plating to planning, for you guys, I think is what it comes down to.
But everyone still just wants us to be plating, that's the problem. Any other communications? Okay, next we have reports from the city planner. I don't know, Log, if you were able to do anything else.
Oh, I've got several, actually, so...
If you'd like to leave the discussion?
I will. Well, the first thing I would, I'm going to bring Ed Baum from the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Commission up, if he doesn't mind. The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Commission is required by code to give a presentation to City Council and to the Planning Commission, a report on an annual basis, based upon the work of the Advisory Commission. So today we will be presenting to you guys a report, and I think I only gave three copies of the large documents, or maybe four. One was for Charlene's records, and then the other two were for Nicholas and RJ. The mayor and Paul should both already have a copy of them.
Some of them you have got, but you need...
I think we...
Yeah, I can.
We have four, because Harry's not here, so...
Right. One should be for Charlene, and then three were Nicholas, RJ, and Harry. So if there's an extra, the mayor should already have one. Paul, I thought you had one.
I do well, but you're welcome for a second for your desk.
Not in front of me.
Here you go.
Mr. Baum, if you would take the oath, I'd appreciate it. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth to this commission?
Yes, I do.
Alright, thank you.
Comprehensive plans are rather strange creatures. Sometimes they're created by administrations, sometimes by city councils. Our comprehensive plan is a little bit unique, and we discovered that as we worked for Pokemire Design Group, that we had a very large participation by the community in it. We had meetings, we had a town meeting, which far exceeded the expectations of the planners. And so, to a large extent, our comprehensive plan is a result of those discussions which were held over a two-and-a-half-year period, and which tried to set the tone of where the city wants to go over the next, really, what is now another 10 years. The, it was adopted by City Council in 2007, and it created, City Council also created a committee to sort of review how the plan is being implemented, because to a large extent, the citizens cannot implement a plan. That becomes the responsibility of three major groups. First group, of course, is City Council, which both adopts budgets and laws regarding those parts of the city plan which need to be adopted. The administration, which has its own responsibilities, and then the Planning Commission itself. What we have done here over the last two years is attempt to identify how we measure progress on the city plan. We attempted to identify a variety of things, which I'll ask Paul to talk about in a moment, the specifics of it, but identify ways in which we know whether or not we're doing what the citizens said we really should be doing for the city of Athens. This is to be considered a work in progress. As you look at the CD, which has spreadsheets on it, you'll notice some blanks, where we have not yet been able to attain information regarding certain of the measures that we are using to identify our progress in the city plan. You'll notice some things that are to be done. So this is both a charge to ourselves as a commission, to continue working on filling in the blanks, but also a charge to City Council, to the administration, and to the Planning Commission, to move ahead on areas which we've identified as still needs to be done. So you'll notice that there are, for each of the major areas which Paul will talk about, goals identified, and how do we know if we're achieving those goals? Those are the benchmarks. And then what needs to be done in each of those areas if we want to move forward. So that's the overall picture, and then Paul will talk about the areas and specifics.
The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Commission established five primary sections to the, that needed to be evaluated in relation to the comprehensive plan. Economic Development, the Environment, Housing in Neighborhoods, History, Arts and Culture, and Infrastructure and Transportation. So we broke down those primary focus points of the plan into that report. For each one of those five sections, we created subsections with our goals and benchmarks in relation to what the comprehensive plan says. For the sake of time, I would encourage everybody to perhaps read it, and if we wanted to have a discussion at the next Planning Commission, that would be great. We did put a lot of time into this. At this point, we have been working as a group for about two years, I believe, since May of 2008. The commission, or the group, has about 11 of us, 12 of us at any given moment. So a lot of work has been put into it. It is definitely a work in progress, as Ed said. There are a lot of issues, I think, that we've identified through the plan and through this report, that fit in well with what the Planning Commission liked to do in relation to strategic planning and long-range planning. So I think there's several things in there you guys can pull out to focus on over the next year or so at the Planning Commission level.
And...
Go ahead.
Okay, so in terms of information, I know, since you're part of the administration, have you been able to get all the clean information that you required to fill in the matrices, or in process, or do you need to...
We were unable to get all of the information that we wanted. Some of the information just doesn't exist yet, so there are things we would like to collect that we are unable to at this point. We're going to be working with the folks that we think might have that information, or might be able to create that information, such as perhaps the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Economic Development Bureau, organizations at Ohio University, at the Buonaventure School, that may have ways to create some of this information for us so that we can report on a yearly basis. So we are working on that over the next 12 months. That'll be one of our challenges.
What we hope is that over the next 12 months, we can sort of flesh out the report. But I should also note that one of the things that most planners tell us is a plan should be revised, really considered seriously about every five years. This plan is built upon most of the discussions which took place in 2001, 2002. The plan was then specifically developed by Pokemire, went to the Planning Commission, which looked at it for about a year and a half, two years, finally went to City Council. So that what we're dealing with is an area that was very active in terms of people's minds almost 10 years ago. Things have changed, the greater emphasis upon sustainability, upon green space, that were really not well-developed those eight to 10 years ago, which really need to be looked at. And so, one of the things we hope is that the Planning Commission, through its review of strategic planning process, and City Council, will get to the point where we can begin to really serious update the city plan. It has been updated a little bit on the behalf, by means of the town hall meetings, that we've had over the last year and a half, but that is not a really comprehensive look at the plan as a plan.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Couple things. I know you presented to council, I was sitting there when you did that. I know we have the pedestrian bike plan. The next question would of course occur, you left it up to council's task for the most part to do this, if I remember, and not that I'm being territorial about it, because I remember there was a turf war at one time between who's supposed to do this. I guess the questions I have is if we, let's say we want to update a section of it, sustainability, for instance. How do you perceive us adding a chapter, taking it apart, sticking something in the middle, you know? Do you have a view of how this would, the process?
I don't have a specific process in mind. There are so many different models out there of how you update a plan. One model says start over. Another model says, as you point out, we're missing an area here, let's appoint a citizens committee to look at this. It may be that the planning committee, council, commission itself wants to take this on. One of the things that the commission will be looking at in its August meeting, we don't have a specific date yet, is since we are a review and advisory commission, what advice can we give to move the process along? And we'll be looking at some of the what needs to be done sections, and is this something that we, as a commission, can specifically recommend? In the strategic plan itself, there are all kinds of examples of laws, codes, ordinances, which other cities have adopted. We may say to either City Council or to you, this is something that should be added to, or these are things, steps that you might take to move this along.
Good. Well, I was going to say, I mean, I think that's a fantastic concept, that it would, recommendations would come from the Advisory Commission, as sort of the group that's looking at this the most holistically, and is taking the time to kind of go over each element to see where there are holes, whereas, you know, we're seeing a lot of times just minor cases, and we have to see where they fit in. Occasionally, we're able to find aspects that seem to be missing in the comprehensive plan that maybe could help some of these developments. But as a whole, your group, the Advisory Commission, seems to be in the best position to do that, so that can help council and the Planning Commission along.
Okay, a couple things. One is, since I skimmed it just before the town hall meeting, but really didn't take a lot of time to look at it. Are there any Ds in here, in terms of grades?
Other than question?
Ds. Give us a grade. What's the lowest grade in here?
Oh, well, there are some areas toward the latter part of the report, you'll notice there are more blanks than things filled in.
Okay.
And part of that is the responsibility of myself, and to a lesser extent, Paul, because we took on some areas that we originally worked on housing and neighborhoods, and then because of changes in personnel, we ended up looking more at infrastructure and transportation. I think those are a little bit weaker.
I think that was my topic.
If I had to give the whole thing a report, as a progress report, I'd give it a B. It's got some holes, but a lot of hard work has gone into this by people who, this is not their sort of occupation or innovation, but willing to look at things as needed by the city, and to say, where are we going, and why are we going there, and how are we going to get there.
And I have to apologize, since I was on Public Works and Transportation and kind of got busy.
I wasn't going to cast any stones.
I know. I accept responsibility, as I shirked in that sense. Which brings me to the next question. How are you doing for membership, and do we need to put a shout-out for more people and questions?
Yes. The commission itself, each member serves on a three-year term. It's renewable, I imagine. City Council appoints these people, and when it was established, two years ago, it was established that there were three people with a one-year term, two people with a two-year term, and three people with a three-year term. I was on one of the three-year terms. There are some statutory members. The mayor's a member, the planner's a member, the county planner's a member. So these are people who, whether they're there for one year, one month, or 10 years, they're members. There are three, I can't remember, were three or two members whose term is ending, and so we do need some fresh blood, as it were. So if you have anybody might be interested in serving on the commission, we'd love to have their names. They will have to be appointed by City Council, because it is a body created by ordinance.
Apologize. Is there a nomination? Do you, the names, so they provide it to you, and you sort of suggest to City Council, or do you vote nominate?
If you have any names, let Paul know.
Okay.
He becomes our person.
There are a few requirements within the ordinance relating to neighborhood representation, Ohio University, business, things of that nature, so, but it's general enough that we can generally, we can fit somebody in. I would estimate that most of us, the volunteers on this commission, were probably putting in anywhere from at least 10 hours a month on this, out of their own time, so there is certainly a time commitment that would be expected out of anybody.
Alright, do you have any other comments?
No, it's in your hands.
Any questions?
So I assume maybe the media will actually let us, let people know that there's vacancies on this, or interest in one sense, right?
Okay.
Looking towards the knot there. Can't hurt to plug.
Well, I haven't had a chance to read through this yet. I know that there seems to be conflict between, say, what the comprehensive plan wanted to do in terms of density in the past, which comes into conflict with, you know, some of the more recent decisions by City Council and what have you. Is density going to be playing a major, will that be a major topic within the committee?
It's always a topic. It's interesting to note that one of the recommendations of both of the earlier, what's called Tom Hodgson Mill Street Plan, and the comprehensive plan, is an increase in density in what basically is the Mill Street area. And that has happened, as those houses have suddenly become two- and three-story houses with huge backs on them. So density has increased, not necessarily in the way as originally anticipated, but between Palmer Place and the new mega-houses, I'll call them mega-houses, it has been increasing. That's always a question of what is an appropriate density. I was born in New York City. I only stayed there three months, so I don't remember very much of it. But if you go to New York City, you know, you have buildings that are many stories tall, that go right to the curb, and they don't have problems. So density itself is not the problem, it's how people react to certain situations. So that's one of the things we'll probably be still looking at.
Would, I mean, it would make sense that maybe we do take time to review this and maybe bring it up for discussion at the next meeting, since we aren't going to be going into the strategic planning in Harry's absence, in all likelihood. So, you know, it might be a good topic for that meeting. So for now, we should put this on the agenda, try to take a read-through, and we can bring up some points like RJ had, of where we'd like to see the Advisory Commission taking a closer look at it in the next year. Alright, well, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Is there yet any other items to report, Mr. Luck?
I do.
Yep.
Thank you, Ed. There's four different, maybe three different subjects, I mean, three different subjects in the Planning Commission. The short packet I've given you there are relating to three separate issues that I think the Planning Commission, and that we really need to look at right now. First, page one is recommendations to add bicycle parking requirements to our bulk controls, for the parking, off-street parking table within the zoning code. The parking requirements I've recommended here in the definition are in accordance with the bicycle and pedestrian plan, that was approved by City Council in May, and then some recommendations that were also reviewed by the Athens City Council Subcommittee for Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning. So these are some basic definitions that seem to be reasonable to include, and some basic requirements for parking for bicycles, just like we require any other type of parking when we're approving a project. So I wanted to give this to the Planning Commission. It is part of the zoning code, so this would be something that we'd be asking the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to City Council on. I'm not expecting the Planning Commission to make a recommendation today on it, but it is something I would encourage you folks to review, and then maybe... it is something I would encourage you folks to review and then maybe at the next planning commission meeting, if there's any questions we can, or any issues with it, we can try to work it out. And ideally, I would like to see that recommendation move forward to city council. Yes, ma'am?
Do you believe this, these amendments would require a public hearing in place or?
I'm not sure, actually.
Good question. Is it substantial?
It's an amendment to the zoning code.
It is.
Right?
Yep.
So we'd be, is it an amendment or an addition to the zoning code? I guess, I think we'd have to review that, but it may require, that's a fair point. It may require that. And what we've included here is it's a definition for short-term bicycle parking so that it is clear where it is and what it is. And then also the recommendations, which are for a minimum of four bicycle parking spaces for any commercial, retail, restaurant, or similar facility, with an additional two bicycle parking spaces for every 10,000 square feet over the first 10,000 square feet of use. For multi-unit residential, that is something I think we may want to look at. I'm not sure if we should include that for duplexes, triplexes, if they're only for large, anything above three or four units for multi-unit residential. The comprehensive, the bicycle plan did not get into specifics on whether it should be a two-unit, three-units, et cetera, just said multi-use or multi-unit, so that it's something the planning commissioners may want to chime in on. On the second page, the second, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of comments.
Oh, I assume the multi-residential would be long-term and therefore the guidelines for, that are referenced for the bicycle and pedestrian plan have long-term bicycle racks or parking or?
Well, the recommendation here would be that if the required amount of bicycle parking exceeds six, the number 16, then half of those spaces need to be sheltered in accordance with our bicycle pedestrian plan. For long-term parking, that is something if, I thought we would start small with the short-term.
Okay.
Just from my own point of view, but if you would like information on how we could integrate that into the planning and into the zoning code, certainly I would encourage that.
Good. RJ?
Just in terms of the commercial retail, for instance, just throwing the place out, Brennan's, this uptown, where would somebody like that have to put their designated parking place, their bicycle parking places? Not on the sidewalk, right?
It's a good question. I'm not sure. That may be something where we don't, the B-2D, we don't require on or off-street parking for vehicles. We can waive that bicycle parking requirement for the B-2D as well.
Good.
Would this fall for new construction or no grandfather's status? Everybody else, everybody have to comply over time or?
I think it would have to be for new construction or change of use.
Okay. Yeah. I figured as much, just want to be clear.
Was the bicycle and pedestrian plan passed by city council unanimously?
Yes.
Okay. Just don't want to approve more stuff they're gonna, about now on.
We could increase our bicycle racks in the parking garage to cover the uptown area.
We only have to use.
Okay. What was the, the next part of package?
Just real quick, I know there's, I have four questions written down, but I, the second, I forget. One was about a public hearing, second was about the uptown district, the B-2D.
Yeah.
Third was new construction, change of use, and the second one, I think, mayor, was you requested.
Just the long-term stuff?
Long-term.
Long-term part.
Thank you.
I guess I'm thinking in terms of construction standards. Again, I am remiss by not reading, I assume the park, had, park.
The bicycle and pedestrian plan is included on that list as well, yeah.
142 pages. I'm sorry, I haven't got it at all.
With the map, too.
He's got 138 now.
No, I don't. Worked on it.
Okay. The second issue was lot coverage requirements. This was a discussion that I had had and John and I had been working on over concerns that the planning commission has brought up over several, several of our site plans as well, city council members have brought up as well, about the fact that our city code has a definition for lot coverage that only includes the square footage of your buildings. Lot coverage does not include the permeable and impermeable surfaces, doesn't include driveways, et cetera, and parking lots. And the general consensus is that the fact that we don't have any requirements for maximum or total lot coverage is having a negative impact on the look of our neighborhoods as well as our stormwater management. It has included the rate of stormwater runoff and it is eliminating green space, what was once green space, and backyards are now becoming parking lots. So this was a recommendation to change the definition or to create a definition for total lot coverage, which would include the total, the ratio of the enclosed ground floor area of all buildings plus the ratio of area covered with gravel, stone, shell, impermeable decking, pavers, impermeable pavement, et cetera, as a percentage of the area of the total lot. And the recommendation that John and I came up with by doing an analysis of several recently approved developments was that we capped the total lot coverage at 60%. And the reason we came up with that number was we took a chunk of approved projects and evaluated what they were actually doing with lot coverage. The 40% lot coverage is the maximum that we permit for the building size. What we found was that almost all buildings that were actually being approved only had a lot coverage of about 21% to 25%. So even though they're allowed to build up to 40% of a lot, they were only building it at 25%. But we had also found that the total lot coverage on most of these lots exceeded 70%, with some of them going all the way up to 91%, 92%, which basically means that our code allows you to tarmac an entire lot as long as you squeeze your trees in. From the city's perspective, that does have a negative impact on the cost to provide stormwater management for our storm sewer service, increases the rate of pollution going into our river, the rate of, the capacity where storm sewers are impacted by that. So we thought it would be reasonable from that perspective, based upon what had been approved and what people were doing, that we cap it at 60%. And what we also found was that the majority of the developments that we had approved would still be approved with a cap at 60%, meaning that they could still get the building that they wanted. If it's in a floodplain, they could provide the parking underneath as opposed to the parking outside. They still, they have to elevate anyway. They would still be able to provide the same amount of units, they would still meet our height pipe requirements, and they would still get their parking in. And so this is a basic recommendation that we have, that we cap the total lot coverage at 60% in order to create green space, to preserve backyards, and to minimize stormwater runoff. Again, something to consider.
Okay. Go ahead.
You have a question?
I did. My question is, so not only are you proposing to change the definition of lot coverage to include all these permeable surfaces outside?
This would be two definitions. One would be for lot coverage, which is the ratio of the enclosed ground floor area of all buildings and on a lot, we would retain that lot coverage, that definition with its bulk controls as are listed on this page that we included. So we would retain those requirements as written, add an additional definition for total lot coverage, which would include the impermeable surfaces, impermeable decking, et cetera, and then have a bulk control for that number, which includes your building plus basically your driveway and your parking lot.
So does the, I guess, I don't understand how you would add the total one as well without amending all the bulk controls to add the new definition? Because you'd also be changing all the percentages as well, correct?
No. No. Your maximum lot coverage right here, you may need to change that from maximum lot coverage to the definition of lot coverage that only includes the building, which is what we have today.
Okay.
So that would stay the same. The size of your building.
We would just add another one?
Would still be staying as it's permitted in bulk controls today.
Okay.
You would have an additional column that lists your total lot coverage.
Well, but we would change, I guess.
So you may need to change some of the verbiage, but you don't need to change the math involved with how you achieve how much of your lot can be covered by your buildings.
Well, I guess I would be uncomfortable with doing a 60% max across the board, because I would think that in, you know, the B-2D or, you know, B-3, we'd want more that developed in new construction.
There's not even a requirement at the back end. B-1, 2, and 3 are just like industrials, like.
So, okay.
If I'm reading this correctly.
So it's really just impacting the Rs districts?
Well, the concern in what we evaluated were projects that were in R3 zones and in a B2 zone. That's what we evaluated. There's very few projects that are gonna, would be negatively impacted within R1, single-family residents in an R1. Generally, people want a front and backyard. However, our code today doesn't say that you've got to have a front and backyard. It doesn't, the issue is that we need to bring something in there.
Right.
To reduce the amount of lot coverage that we are allowing right now so that we can have green space, we can have soil absorption or water absorption on-site as opposed to everything being collected into our storm sewer system.
Well, that makes sense. I do, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
That's hard to see. Go ahead.
Okay. A couple of things. The only time I've seen lot coverage issues on R1s, of course, is when the lot is substandard and not conforming and setback, and really setback rules, as, you know, on this table, the bulk control table, they actually usually limit how much you can actually get on it. Because once you start talking about front setbacks, rear setbacks, and side setbacks, you pretty much have cramped down into a.
Correctage.
Okay. The other question, two things I'm interested in is, one is that you talk about the new definition, total lot coverage, ratio of enclosed ground floor area of all buildings, which is the old definition, plus on lot, plus the ratio of area covered by gravel, stone, shell, impermeable decking, a paver, permeable pavement. So I assume that we're not trying to address runoff at that point, but we're just addressing green space more than anything else.
Both.
Okay.
Which is why you're including permeable and impermeable.
Okay. So you want that in there. It is permeable pavement that you want to limit the amount of as well.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Okay. The other one is lot coverage does not include, one, fences of one foot with no footer, makes sense, wood mulch pathways, deckless gaps to allow water to pass freely. If I remember, decks usually really are considered part of the lot coverage right now.
Yeah.
Are they not?
I haven't, unfortunately. Well, I reckon that one now.
Okay. And I know the reason why that is, because I've been on zoning board appeals where when you had a patio which is impermeable and it wasn't counted, is one thing. But once you, there was a case actually where somebody had a bad patio, rather than chop up the concrete, what they did is we'll just put some two-by-fours on edge and turn it into.
That makes sense, yeah.
And all of a sudden, it became a deck and lot coverage and some rear setback came into play. And the concept there, and I think it's on the next zoning board of appeals, is that where somebody's going to enclose a porch. And the concept there is once you put a deck up and then you put the size on a deck and then you put a roof on the deck and then put screens in, somewhere along that turns into a bedroom.
Yeah. It's pretty easy to get a variance once the deck.
I understand the idea with gaps to allow water to pass freely, that would probably eliminate that definition, because as soon as you get rid of the gaps, then you're back in porches and lot coverage.
Right. That makes sense.
But the decks would now fall when they're under the total lot coverage versus now they're in the current definition of lot coverage. So you have your structure under roof as one part and then decks, drives, et cetera, being the other part. So it kind of would jump to the other part, but it would still, that would allow, I guess, people to build, as long as they're meeting bulk controls and setbacks to build the decks as long as they're under the total set, or coverage requirements.
Is a, going back to the subjective part of the first case, they were to build that apartment and it was open below for parking, is that considered a closed ground floor or is that a covered ground floor? Because I would think enclosed means it's walled off, not just.
Parking underneath, that would be part of your lot coverage.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So the deck was gaps in it. I build a house, you know, 30% coverage. I have the garage, another 10%. I'm at 40. The driveway takes me up to 60 and then I have the deck. What is the deck, can't put, put in there?
No. Anything under a roof would fall under 30. The garage in the house would fall under 30, anything under a roof. Right now, we can allow or deny a wood deck because it's a structure if it takes it over 30%. But if someone says, well, then I won't put that in, I'll put down a 500-square-foot concrete deck, nothing we can do. So this, we're throwing the deck situation into the 30 to 60 number where, since it's not under a roof now, if they come back and want to screen it in and they're already at 30%, couldn't do it.
Is the, I mean, you guys, when you looked at this, found the 60%, that was also not only just looking at new construction, was that looking at?
Addition.
The one I'm concerned about is like additions in the small, in our small lots in our denser neighborhoods, that this is attainable.
That's one of the reasons, that's one of the things we're concerned about, too, is that currently you can build massive additions of nothing but structure plus parking lots.
Well, no, I understand, I'm definitely against the parking lots. I guess there's some, you wouldn't want to create, you know, more sprawl in a sense, but people wanting a bigger lot so they can get the size house they need with improvements around it or something. And that way, they would not look at moving to an east-side or west-side neighborhood because the lot's too small to put in all the improvements they'd like.
Well, as we found, very few of those homes that are being built or being done, if it's, they're talking about improvements to their house, we're even touching the, if it's a single family, they weren't even touching the percentage of lot coverage.
Okay.
And their parking areas would be a lot less for a single-family home as well, so.
Right. I mean, I understand a lot of this is parking related and people just developing the entire lot for parking to support the resident, you know, the residents in those houses, so.
And we thought the other part that, excuse me?
No, good. I mean, I think the intention is clear on what the recommendation is here. I guess that's my only concern, is just.
And I was gonna say, I think the shade tree canopy requirement or request is for the city's what, 40%, which worked out nicely with the 60% as well, so.
Go ahead.
I suspect this would need a public hearing.
Yeah.
And an education, the zoning board of appeals, too.
And it would, at some point, would need a recommendation from the planning commission.
Yes. Oh, definitely.
Maybe.
He has one more.
One more?
Oh, it is, I thought it was. We're not getting that easy.
We included this as well.
Cell phone.
Cell phone, wireless communications ordinance. We've been off and on about that for years. Comprehensive plan even provides model ordinance on that. I don't think the model ordinance that they provide is as thorough as what I've seen looking around at what other communities in Ohio have done in relation to cell phone towers. We have nothing on the books right now. It is something we should really take a look at. I've got a few other model ordinances from other communities that I will try to provide to you guys over the next few weeks. City council would also like to look at wireless communications ordinance as well. So I think this is something that we should try to make a focus on over the next month or so. This is just a sample as to what's been done, for the sake of time, for the two gentlemen who probably have to go back to work. I would just ask that over the next few weeks that you guys look this over. I can forward, email out a few other things to the planning commission for discussion and then at the next meeting or in the next several meetings, we can try to discuss this and devise a telecommunications ordinance that is good for the city of Athens.
Fast question.
Yeah.
I assume this is for towers or are you talking about trying to control what goes up on light poles in terms of the little repeaters or something?
This would be for cell phone towers.
Cell phone towers, okay. I figured as much. I just wanted clarification. Thanks.
Do you have any questions for, Mr. Lott? Director Enforcement Soties, do you have to ask any?
I knew we had a lengthy agenda, so I didn't do anything.
We do always love to hear from you. Since we've seemed to have scared the rest of the city since then, we're in a ten Since we've seemed to have scared the rest of the city as soon as they were in attendance tonight, I will skip item five. And next, we have announcements and other business. First announcement is our next meeting is still on the books for July 21st, same time and place. Any other business or announcements people would like to make? Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review last meeting's minutes?
I moved the except minutes. I didn't see any problems with it.
I second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? And no further discussion. We are adjourned.
Thank you.